Terry, please know that all are present and that John is on the phone. Okay, let's all stand to the platform, please. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'd like to approve the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda, and it would, I would like to move item D1, the superintendent's reports and presentations, up prior to number five, public comments related to closed session, and I'd also like to remove item J3. Do I have a motion?
I salute.
Tori, Terry, did you get all that? Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
A second.
Thank you, John. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve moving item D1 up to before item five, A5, and also removing J3. Is there any discussion? All right, Terry, the roll call, please.
Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. All right, and so with that, we will go to D1, superintendent's reports and presentations. Scott, I know you don't have a report tonight, but you might have something you want to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. So, to the board, I must begin with this, thank you for your support these past almost two months while I carried through my life. Never in my career have I had to put life on hold for such an extended period of time. You allow me to do it, and we'll be forever grateful. I am ever joyed to share with you that Brenda's recovery has been nothing short of miraculous, and I thank God for that. She simply has more good work to do. After thirty-seven days in ICU room and eleven days in a room on a neurofloor at Cottage Hospital, when it was transferred to Cottage Rehabilitation Hospital last Thursday, she is eating, drinking, taking steps, having conversations, and her memory, both short and long term, appear intact. Against all odds, the conversation with the doctors taking place with the words "complete recovery" were spoken. Thank you so very much for the support you've shown me and my family. To the bigger picture, this meeting concludes an eight-year tenure for me as your superintendent. I've been honored to serve our students, staff, and community in this capacity. This value means so much to me. Thank you so very much for the opportunity. While tomorrow is my last official day, I am committed to help my successor, Andy Schwab, transition smoothly and well. Others to thank, to the staff, I've said this before, some of the finest people I've ever met work here. Many will remain friends long into the future. You all do amazing things for the students we have the privilege of serving. To my leadership team, Michelle Borges, Stephanie Gagones, Tori Martinez, Claudia Peña, I am so honored to have worked with you this past year. You are each talented, passionate, and caring. You took over for me when I was unable to serve. I have no idea how much this means to me. Michelle, you shoulder an exceptional load of excellence these past couple of months and stepped up tremendously. Thank you so very much. To Terry Westfall, you picked a heck of a time to come on board with my assistant. Your job has been anything but normal since you started. Normal is highly overrated anyway. Know that I think you are exceptional. We've carried a heavy load together these past couple of years, and there was no one else out around the vicinity of your chair. To Alicia, Dr. Lewis, know how much I value your expertise, advice, humor, and friendship. Your unique way of phrasing things has helped me to see issues from another perspective. We got some great things done in the face of sometimes daunting circumstances. Thank you for caring so much for Brenda and for the rest of my family. To Jan and Tori, you both know how much you need me. Fellow leaders, friends, confidants, supporters and encouragers, you believed in me and stood by me. Jan, for your years as the board presidents, president, a special thanks you have been and are worthy. Your kindness to me and my family, to Paige in particular, is meant so much. As the board moves forward, I wish you all the best. Our district is poised for great things. With a new superintendent and the chance to appoint a new board member, there is the opportunity to establish a strong and vibrant governance team that I have no doubt will serve our students and community with excellence. Thank you again for the honor to have been your superintendent and also for your service as members of the board for the Senate and its valued and ideal district. And forgive me for leaving now, but I have a date with my wife in San Barbara.
Thank you, Scott. Well said. So, Dr. Corey, I presume, I can't say that anymore. On behalf of the Santa Ana Valley Union High School District, we would like to present him with this clock. It says, "In recognition of your time, uh-huh, service, and dedication, Santa Ana Valley Union High School Superintendent, June 2013 through July 2021." And hopefully you will find a place in your new office to keep you on track, but remember us. Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. So, um, hope, okay, thank you, you're welcome. But it's been an absolute pleasure to work side by side with you. And during my first tenure as president, it was smooth sailing, et cetera. And then we had to go to a little break, and then twisted by an arm, which is still recovering.
God bless you.
Okay, but it's all good, and we'll continue on. So, thank you so much for everything that you've done for us.
Thank you.
All right, and that's the gift bag that goes with it.
Always have to move.
And a box to move, okay? Show that to the other. All right, I should see you soon.
Thank you, everyone.
I know. I could say "y'all" to you, but I can't. So. All right, on to item five, which is public comments related to closed session. Are there any public comments related to closed session? Okay, seeing none, we will go to closed session, and we will remain in here. So, audience, if you want to depart for a little bit, we'll let you know when we are back in, okay? Thank you. All right, the time is now six fifteen. We are reconvening an open session. During open session, item B1, negotiations, the board voted five oh to give a 2.5% off-schedule increase to admin, Michelle Borges, Peter Haas, and Stephanie Gagones. That's enough, we'll move on. Item E, public comment. All right, seeing none, we will move on. F is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Assoulu, Tori, do I have a second?
A second.
Steve, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any points of discussion tonight on the consent agenda? Okay. Okay, and we have a motion and a second, so we need a roll call, Terry? Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, great. All right, let's move on to the action agenda K. First item, number two, resolution 2020-2021-20, certifying courses offered through course-based independent study option for 2021, 2022. And this resolution, was this, did we discuss this previously? Or no, this is official, this is something that has to be done annually? Okay. For the courses, for edutainment? Okay, for edutainment, all right. So, do I have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Do we have a second? Second, Tori? We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2020-2021-20, certifying courses offered through course-based independent study option for 2021, 22. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five zero, thank you. All right, item K3, 2021, 2022, original adopted budget in 2021 through 2022 through 2023 and 2024, multi-year projections of approval. Alicia, do you have a question?
So, this is just the formal approval in relation to the budget that we reviewed at the last meeting. So, the budget and the LCAP both have to be reviewed at one meeting and then approved at a subsequent meeting. There are no changes to the information that was presented.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve?
Jose.
Jose, Juan, do I have a second?
A second.
Steve, do I have a motion and a second to approve the 2021-2022 original adopted budget and 21, 22 through 23, 24 multi-year projections approval? Is there any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, great. Item K4, 2021, 22 through 23, 24, balances in excess of minimum funding reserves approval.
Same thing goes along with the budget. This is just the official reporting of the balances in excess of the minimum reserves that we have. No information has changed from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Alicia. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second, Tori, do I have a second? Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. Item five, approval of EPA resolution 2020-2021-19, 2021-2022 EPA budget of revenue and expenditures, and 2020, 2021, report of estimated actuals of revenue and expenditures.
Following the same line, it's the EPA budget that we reviewed last board meeting and just a formal approval this board meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I salute.
Steve, thank you, second?
Second.
Jose Juan, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item five. Is there any discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. Item six, 2021, 22, application for federal funding, Title I and Title II. This is new.
Yeah, so this is just an annual legal requirement. This is new, we did not review this at our prior meeting. It's just the official approval of the board for the district to apply for Title I and Title II funds.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Assoulu.
Steve, do I have a second?
Second.
Right, Jose Juan, is there any discussion? So, my question is, about how much do we get in funding?
We get about thirty thousand for Title I, and we usually use that to backfill some English scholars. And then we get about seventeen thousand from Title II, and we use that usually for professional development.
Okay, great. Any discussion? Okay, all right, Terry? Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item seven, 2021, 22, LCFF budget overview for parents.
So, this is a sort of cover sheet slash addendum to our LCAP. Nothing has changed since the last time we reviewed it. It is just a sort of graphic for parents that succinctly explains the financials that are in our LCAP plan.
Okay, great. Do I have a motion to approve?
A second.
All right, Jose Juan. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, Terry? Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. Okay, item eight, 2021, 22, Global Control Accountability Plan, LCAP.
Again, we reviewed this at our last meeting. Several grammatical typographical errors have been corrected, you know, commas here, periods there, dollar signs here, but none of the actual plans, actions, or services have changed.
Okay, great. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I'm seconded?
Second.
Okay, move it to John, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, so Terry? Mr. Luke.
Aye.
Mr. Avara.
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger.
Aye.
Mrs. Babcock.
Aye.
Dr. Baiki.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, thank you. That was huge, and again, Michelle, thank you for your work on the LCAP. Okay, we're going to go on to adult discussion, item two, impact of approved negotiations agreements to the 2021, 22 budget. Alicia?
Yes, ma'am, I'm just getting a set up here. You can do it here without writing things? The impact the collective bargaining agreement settlements are going to have on our budget and our future decisions.
Okay.
So, we're just going to review bargaining group specifics, our multi-year district impact, and then out-year reduction requirements. We'll start with the classified group. As a review, classified is composed of twenty-seven employees. It's a range of custodians, maintenance, office supplies, individuals like that. The average total cost of an employee in the classified demographic is sixty-seven thousand eight forty-seven, and the average salary is forty-four thousand. Our, well, they're no longer tentative agreements. I thought I was going to be giving this presentation at the last board meeting, so some of this is a little bit old news to you guys, so I apologize for that, but just to review the agreement specifications, it's a three-year agreement, no reopeners. All salary increases are on schedule in the amounts of eight percent, followed by three percent the next year, and then three percent in the final year. For classified, a seventh step was added to the classified salary schedule. So, as it stands now, our classified salary schedule only had, well, as it stood then, only had six steps. So, after their sixth year with the district, there were no more step and column raises. So, if there was not a raise given by the district, that is where they were with their salary. Teachers, on the other hand, had a number of columns, and at the highest most column, they had twenty-five years' worth of increases in grade in their salary schedule. The health and welfare cap per classified each year is 1.5%, and the day before Thanksgiving is now a paid holiday for them. The total bargaining unit cost for the classified agreement over three years is two hundred and twelve thousand. Moving to the next group, the classified management confidential demographic. This is comprised of seven employees. Three of them are considered confidential and four are actual managers. We have our IT manager, our business manager, our maintenance and operations manager, our kitchen manager, as well as our student data specialist, IT engineer, and the assistant to the superintendent slash HR slash anything and everything else that we need. The average total cost per employee, so including, you know, all their benefits and everything, is a hundred and forty-two thousand eighty-two dollars. The average salary for an employee in this demographic is ninety thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. Their agreement is also a three-year agreement with no reopeners. Again, all of their salary increases are also on schedule, and it is a four percent increase, followed by three, and then three again in the final year. Their health and welfare increases are 1.5% across all three years. And for them, December twenty-third becomes an additional paid holiday, so that the classified management has one additional holiday per year above the classified bargaining unit. The total bargaining unit cost for the classified management is a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The faculty association is a little bit more complicated, so we're going to keep it to just the fiscal aspects of their agreement. It encompasses forty-seven employees, including teachers, our academic dean, our health and wellness coordinator, and guidance counselors. So, there is an error on this. The academic dean was moved last year to the admin salary schedule. I forgot that when I was making this. So, our academic dean is not included in this demographic, so my apologies, I just coughed up. The average total cost of an employee in this demographic is a hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-five, and the average base salary for a teacher is eighty-five thousand six hundred and seventy. The tentative agreement for them is also three years with no reopeners, and their salary increases are also all on schedule. They elected to receive their entire share upfront in the first year of their agreement for an eleven percent on-schedule increase, followed by two years of zero percent increases. We added a department head stipend of three thousand five hundred dollars annually, and the sub-credit rate increased from forty-two dollars to forty-four, to forty-five dollars for periods one through six, because they're longer or they're full periods, and from thirty dollars to thirty-two dollars for the seventh period, because it is a shorter period minutes-wise. Their health and welfare cap increases is zero for the first year, followed by one percent, and two percent in the third year. Their contracted days also increased from a hundred and eighty-one days to a hundred and eighty-three days of service. The total bargaining unit cost for the faculty association is six hundred and forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So, the impact of negotiations to the district budget, we're going to take a look at those through the multi-year perspective. As you remember, every time we have to do a budget, we have to look at not only the current or upcoming fiscal year, but the next two years. That's how we looked at our negotiations. That's what all of the contracted agreements follow, so we have a three-year window where we know exactly what's going to come on. The impact on our ending fund balance, so the state only requires us to carry a four percent minimum fund balance for our district size. However, the recommended minimum fund balance for basic aid districts is usually no less than twenty percent, given the volatile nature of being a basic aid. A very good example of this was when Olive Grove came in. If you're an LCFF or state-funded district, and a charter school comes in and takes ADA or takes funding, the state backfills that funding. If you're a basic aid district, the idea is that you already receive more in property taxes than the state would give you anyway, so it's fine if you lose those property taxes. So, for a basic aid district, when Olive Grove came in and took the ADA and lessed the dollars from the district, it was a hit to our budget that didn't have any way to backfill. So, that came out of, I won't say it came out of nowhere, we saw it coming, obviously, but it was one of those things that the district didn't have any control over, that was a major hit to our budget. And had things not changed statutory, we would have been in real financial trouble trying to keep that going. So, as a basic aid, we're just, we're more fragile in respect to our budget, even though we have more money than what we should have if we were a state-funded district. So, approving these agreements, so the board currently has a minimum fund balance requirement of three million dollars. The state only requires four percent, but about six or seven years ago, the board passed a resolution stating that the district would carry no less than a three-million-dollar reserve, inclusive of that four percent. So, that four percent is within the three million, it's not four percent plus three million. In approving these agreements, we will violate our three-million-dollar reserve policy in the first year. We will have exhausted all of our excess reserves by the end of year three. In year three, we will be required by the state and the county to make cuts of a minimum of eighty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-two, probably more when we know the full impact of coaching and co-curricular raises, just to keep our budget solvent in year three. To, just literally to pay our bills in year three, we will have to make cuts of eighty-five thousand dollars, which equates to approximately two certificate FTE if they're on the lower end or one if they're on the higher end, so somewhere between one to two certificate FTE. So, if you take a look at the top line, I've outlined for each of the three years what the state required minimum for the district is. The second line shows how much of the three-million-dollar reserve we have left after that. Our excess reserve in each year is zero, and our minimum mandatory cuts are on the bottom line. If you notice, we still have enough in our excess reserves to cover the first two years of this agreement, but as of the third year, in order for the district to keep the six hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-three minimum that we are required by the state, we have to cut eighty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty-two, or we don't meet the state's qualifications for a budget that they can approve. If that happens, the state comes in, the state takes over, and the state replaces the business manager and the superintendent most of the time. There are exceptions to this, but as a general rule, those two figureheads are removed, and the state places people there to balance the budget. With that comes sweeping change, and we don't want to see our programs and our staffing handled that way. So, in light of this information, we need to be looking at progressive incremental out-year reductions. So, if we were to keep our reserve, the three-million-dollar reserve, we don't have to make any cuts in twenty-one, twenty-two, to, well, we don't have to make any cuts in 2021, for 21, 22. In 21, 22, we would need to make cuts for the 22, 23 budget in the amount of a million dollars if we want to keep our three-million-dollar reserve. And in 22, 23, we would need to make cuts of about 2.4 million dollars in order to have a balanced budget in 23, 24. So, what that tells us is that we are at a juncture in time where the board needs to consider whether or not the three-million-dollar minimum reserve requirement is something that we intend to keep. If it is something that we intend to keep, we have substantial amount of cuts that we have to make, and we have to make them soon. If the board would like to visit reducing this or reducing it with a plan to incrementally bring it back, or some other creative way of finding a way to not force our hand. If you do not review the minimum reserve requirement resolution, then it forces the hand of admin to make these cuts in order to meet that requirement. So, we will have to review the three-million-dollar minimum reserve resolution and find a solution that allows us to still balance our budget, but not have to be reactionary in how we find our reductions. So, there are some potential positives here. I don't want to get up here and just give you all negative. Our current original budget is using projected balances, we discussed this. So, basically, the original budget for next year that all of our negotiations documents, this presentation are based on are very flimsy at best, simply because our beginning fund balances are guesses, our ending fund balances are guesses, and everything in between right now is a guess. The only thing we know for sure is how much our bills are going to be in salaries and benefits next year. So, when we have a better idea at first in terms of what our ending fund balances were for this year, what our beginning fund balances were for next year, and where we are with property taxes, we might be in a slightly better position. There is no scenario that happens that isn't some kind of miracle, where property taxes and our unouted actuals fix this solution without cuts. It's not possible. Our current original budget has property taxes projected at two percent. When I went through and did the AB 1200 using two percent, which I know is a conservative number for our district, it didn't work well with the numbers, and it looked more dramatic than I think it will be and more dramatic than I wanted to bring to the board. So, I upped the property tax projections from two percent to 2.5% in all of our AB 1200 documents that we presented to the county. It's still a conservative number, but it's a lot closer to where we probably will end up. So, there isn't a whole heck of a lot of swinging room between what I think we're going to be and what we told the county and where we actually end up. We will probably end up We will probably end up somewhere closer to 3, maybe 3.5, unless there's just some awesome windfall. And I will reach out to the county assessor's office and see if I can't get a better idea of where we actually are. So those are two potential positives that could help alleviate the depth of the cuts that have to come. But it will not solve the problem. There are some non-negotiables as we move forward. It is not possible for us to make the magnitude of cuts that are required without taking a multi-year approach. Simply because '21, '22, when we end our fiscal year, doesn't give us a negative budget or a qualified budget, so they say, does not mean that we don't have to make cuts. If we do not make incremental cuts every year, we are forcing ourselves into a corner, and we are forcing ourselves into a position where we have to be reactionary and, and not as well thought out about what we can do and how to get creative. So incremental cuts over a multi-year approach is the way to do it. We have to take an extremely hard stance on no new staff. Unless it is absolutely necessary to replace people that retire or leave, we need to get creative and use the people that we have and find ways to set up our schedules and master schedules such that we don't have to replace positions. This will cause an increase in class size. It is absolutely unavoidable that it will be the only way to save jobs will be to have class size increases. We have to capitalize on attrition. When we have teachers, yes ma'am?
Oh, please, I was going to go through to you there.
Okay. When we have teachers that are retiring throughout these three years, we need to look very hard at whether those positions need re-replace or whether we can shift people with their credential to take their place.
Thank you, I didn't mean to interrupt you. What's our next, how much longer will we be paying off the last golden handshake? I don't recall.
I believe it was a five-year deal for us. We had to pay in for five years. We paid in last year, was the first year, so we have four more years.
Okay, thank you.
We will have to make staff reductions. It's not an option. We just need to get creative in how we do so. We have already asked the athletic director to make a reduction in coaching staff and, and reduce it to only those coaches that are necessary, all the assistants or any backups. We've already asked her to reduce those. We need to take a very hard stance on a spending freeze. If it is not absolutely necessary, we do not need to be buying it. So you don't like your chair, I'm sorry. It can last for another three years unless there's a problem with it. You don't like the paint, the floor, the carpet. Unless we can do it in-house, it's a spending freeze. And we should only be purchasing those things that we need for our students in the classroom and our project programs and stuff like that. And those things for maintenance and grounds that are required for the daily upkeep of the grounds. No capital projects, no renovations, no maintenance, no nothing that isn't required.
Didn't we just update offices?
So we updated a classroom to accommodate the new program for...
No, offices, for administration offices, furniture, things like that. I thought I saw that for stores and...
We corrected some leaky walls and got new drywall. And in doing so, removed, I believe it was corkboard on the wall. We removed the corkboard and put new drywall. And then there was carpet replaced in a couple of...
No, I'm not talking about maintenance stuff. I mean furniture, no, did I see that?
There was a new desk, I'm sorry, yes, yes. Not, yeah, last year, there was a new desk in the principal's office and a new chair in the principal's assistant's office.
Okay, I, yeah, I just, I just feel like I'm being blindsided by this. I mean, this is, I'm not saying anything nefarious, this is what I'm... But this would have been a great, as we're approving things, you know, bleachers and football field as before my time, but, you know, technology and et cetera, et cetera. This would have been nice to know. And I know things are fluid and things change. But this would have been a great discussion before we signed the contracts last meeting. I was, didn't, you know, going back on my notes from meetings, past meetings, a picture's been presented that we still have that reserve. We, you know, we're dancing around it a little bit, but now all of a sudden we're looking at it like it's gone in three years. And do we even want to continue it? I just feel like I, we're volunteers here who, you know, are not compensated for this position. We willingly wanted to be on this board to help improve this school. And we have lives that we live during the week. And so we rely, we don't have our thumb on the pulse of the finances of the school. So we rely on what we're told in the opens and in the closed sessions. And again, before we signed the contract last meeting, this would have been great to have known, to be known instead of now. But am I open or...
Well, I understand Steve, where you're coming from because it sounds like a lie. And I, didn't you mention some of these non-negotiables last time?
I did, and in the AB 1200, there's, there's the multi-year agreements that do show the same numbers. I think where you're coming from, Steve, is when we meet in closed session, especially at the beginning of negotiations, and the question is asked, what can we do? What can we afford? Is this acceptable? Is this acceptable? That's a snapshot in time. And at that point, in the snapshot in time, certain things weren't approved, additional positions weren't hired. And at that point in time, the snapshot was, yes, absolutely, this is fine. And then in between that snapshot, when we talked about it several months ago, to when we approved, a myriad of positions were added and, and projects were done. And I think that some of the money that was set aside for this was used for other purposes. And that changes the numbers from one snapshot in time to the next snapshot in time.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, like I said, this is a fluid situation, I understand that. But this is drastic what we're seeing here. This is very drastic, and our revenue numbers are, those haven't changed though, because we haven't updated those at all. So that's, we've still known that. And I, it's water under the bridge at this point. So going forward, I think we need to, when we make financial decisions, we certainly have to keep this in mind first and foremost. But going forward, we have to do a better job of stewarding the money of the taxpayers in this valley and this school. And, and I think reverse to where we get better projections upfront before we make major decisions. Is there any way, we talked about revenue being static. Is there any way that we can improve revenue? Can we annex, talk about maybe annexing a community or something to where we can build on that? Or is there any other...
So there are creative things that we can do to generate revenue. I mean, we rent out our facilities, that's not super creative, but we do, so that's a source of revenue. There are things like hosting professional development for the community, like schools, and getting one price and, you know, charging another because we host it. That could generate revenue, professional development. There are a number of different types of things that we can do creatively like that. There are also, I'm sure, a number of grants if we had people that were able to spend the time to search for grants. There are ways that we could generate revenue. It absolutely can be done. It's just a matter of having the manpower to go out for grants in particular, to search for them, write them, and do those types of things.
Okay. I think, I give a normal point, John, and then I'll stop. The, I think it would be with the new superintendent coming in, I think it's a good time to maybe start from scratch and start going, looking, turning over every stone. And do we need all this staff? Do we need, as we've moved into, well, into the 21st century now in technology, do we need all these positions? And maybe just take a look at everything with fresh eyes. And this may be good timing for new leadership and a new, new chance to look at anything. But for people not here and watching, we as a board, we're committed to not turning our school over to Sacramento. And I do not, you know, apologize for these pay increases, especially, you know, for these kitchen workers and maintenance staffs and custodians. You know, if this school, this school should pay a living wage to these people. And that they cannot go home and have dinner with their families and may have to go to a second job in order that they can hold down a full-time cafeteria job. I think it would be embarrassing. So I don't think we would change any of this. But I think it would be nice in the future if we do a better job getting this upfront. So that's...
Go ahead, John.
Piggyback on what Steve said. Not only would it have been a night to have had this data prior to negotiating with staff, it would have been nice for the staff to have seen that this is partly the consequences that might result from accepting the contracts that they are now being given. You know, Steve, he brought the point of fingers in a transcending way at the entire staff that these contracts are causing this. But frankly, had they known in advance this was the repercussions of these new contracts going to contribute, they may have softened their demands, number one. Number two, I don't know whether Principal Vorgit and Superintendent Schwab are still in the audience, but if they are, that's why that I'm looking at is to maintain $3 million reserve. That's why it needs to be shared with the community. It needs to be shared with not just the parents, but the entire staff and all the patients of the San Diego Valley. It needs to be given to the local press. And that's why it needs to be updated periodically and reshared with those same people, so that everybody can feel the conundrum and the pain that the board is going to be facing in the next two years. Otherwise, we're just left to be the bad guy as we make staff deductions to try to up way, come up $1 million. Next period is $2.5 million in two years. And finally, we're going to use this as an opportunity to re-highlight issues of the fact that there weren't a lot of parents talking about it tonight. And that is, we've all gotten many emails on the desire of many parents for beach volleyball. And I spoke into Principal Vorgit, and I can literally understand with what her concerns are and I'm sympathetic with them. But one of the things that, that these parents have publicly stated is they are committed to self-funding the volleyball program. And I understand that, you know, there's a concern on what is the sustainability of self-funding. I get that. But the point is, we have parents that are willing to go the extra mile to find alternative funding measures when our budget cannot support it. And I know for a fact that it's about five or six years ago that New Zealand Word went out and got seven-figure grants for the International Baccalaureate Studies Program. And so this community has a history of caving up additional funds for this school district. And this may now be a time when we need to go out there and find those funds more than others. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Tori?
Well, actually, kind of piggybacking on what John said, there's been talk in the past about establishing San Diego Valley High School Foundation. And it's been done in other communities quite successfully. And have a, you know, alumni association where you pay $20 a year, $25. You get, you know, information in, you have, you know, I don't know, dinners or whatever going on. I think it's always easy to say, gee, we should do this, and then we don't step up. I think that would be, you know, I went to Bishop High School over the past. Bishop has always had a very strong alumni association and foundation, and they raise a lot of money for their school. I still get requests from them a million years ago, so I, I can see us doing something here. I think that might be able to really fill the need for us here. I'd like to pursue that, at least the conversation sometime with the board.
It's, it's something that I brought up to Scott a couple of years ago. And it's been on his list, which obviously has not gotten done. But I agree with you, Tori, and I think that that's one way of helping offset some of the costs and with the tight-knit community that we have. I think that's a strong possibility. I've been approached by a couple of people, like, why don't we have it? So a conversation with our new superintendent, I think would be great. Something, expectations for goals, et cetera.
Well, we have a very generous community. I've seen it over and over again. And we also have had a lot of alumni who've decided to move back to the valley and raise their own children. And they have very successful businesses and are very, you know, prominent community members. And I think if we were able to set something up, we opened the door. I think we might be quite pleased with the results.
Right.
Well, I, I think in retrospect, we could have done a lot, maybe made other decisions, but this is where we are. And how do, how do we go into this proactively? And asking our administrative team on the ground here to begin to identify what's realistic, right? Our good, our intent as a board is to ensure that the faculty and staff and the administrators have the resources they need and that they feel they're taken care of. And, and that's part of our commitment, and this is where we are. And certainly, we didn't have information that we should have. And it sounds like there were two operating bodies on one budget. And so this is where we are. So the call to action is really to, to the leadership here, the district, and the faculty and the staff, to think creatively of how they're going to take care of one another as well, so that we can all collectively take care of our students. They are number one. And so sadly, now we're in a position where cuts need to be made. And hopefully, the cuts aren't going to be, you know, impacting the folks that need, that our students need in particular. So that's a big invitation, and I hope to hear some creative solutions and how we can work together on this. Yes, on the community, you know, outreach. And yes, on the folks who are already with the district who have the ability to write for grants and identify sources. Perhaps this is a moment where there are certain things that are still need to shift, just in terms of responsibilities, to do a sharing of work together. And so I still think that we're in a good position. And I know that, I'm hopeful that the numbers will shift a little bit. And that I know that this valley is more desirable every single day. And hopefully, you know, a boost will come through with some of the taxes and what keeps us moving forward. And so, you know, share the worry, you know, it's kind of our, yeah, I think people probably been there at some point in our own development to adulthood and to find some of those ability. It always works out. So anyway, collectively, we can do this.
Thank you. Can you have anything else to mention?
No, just, we just need to be smart. There are a lot of ways in which our district can save that might seem small. Like instead of overtime, we can do comp time. Instead of, you know, just there are little ways here now that if we all collectively get on this, get on board and really support conserving, I think we'll be in a better position than we think.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you for kind of setting the tone and bringing this to our attention. And yeah, I think we're proactive and, yeah, Alicia was right. And we're not, we're not giving up. There's a lot of posses here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alicia. Any other questions for Alicia? Thank you for your update.
My pleasure.
Okay. Going on to M, board comments and correspondence. Do we have any board comments or correspondence?
That, can I, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
If we, someone here is videoing us, is this, I know someone's been paying for this. This should be responsible to the school, right? At this point, going forward, that we put these meetings out there to the public because not everybody obviously can attend these meetings. And is there...
We're not streaming on YouTube.
At whose expense? Are we, the school paying for this, or is it someone else?
Yeah, no, we're taking, it's free. There's no hoppus to you, for YouTube.
There's no, not for YouTube, for the camera person, right?
Well, that's, that's a private citizen who's doing that.
That's what I'm talking about right there. Could we make that up? It, it seems to me we should be doing that. We should be taking on that cost. Don't you think we should be paying to let the constituents know that the parents, that what's, the people about what's going on in here? Do you think that should be...
They have, they have access to the YouTube. We're being live broadcast and it's...
They have, they have access to YouTube. We're being broad, live broadcast, and it's, it's archived on our website, so there's, there's no cost to us to do that. So, everybody has access to that.
Understood. Who's paying for the camera person?
That would be, um, a private citizen who's...
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
We actually have two going, so we have one camera, which is ours, and then a private one.
Oh, I didn't know that. You have two cameras?
I'm blocking. Yeah.
Where's the second camera?
So, so the district is doing their part?
Yeah, so we're doing our part.
Okay, so we are doing it. That's excellent. Okay.
Thank you, too.
Wow, all right, that's a waste of time. Sorry, okay.
Blessing yours. Bless.
Then the other thing is, um, why are we duplicating this then? I don't want to know. Okay. This is what we do at school. I know that. We, we, all right, recognize, I, I just learned this from my daughter graduating, that there are a lot of people, talk about generosity in the valley, who give local scholarships to kids. And I think it'd be nice if we could just recognize them publicly in a meeting, um, the organizations who do that. And I think they're kind of the unsung, behind-the-scenes people who are generous. I think they ought to, that should be pointed out.
Oftentimes, senior award night, we would do that. That's what, it was the, uh, the venue where people would be announcing their organization and who they were giving the award to, and the kids would walk up. So, that was kind of the big public event. And I guess, of course, we haven't been able to have that, you know, that going, but maybe we can come back to something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I know that's where they get the awards, but that they're recognized, the people who actually...
I think that, I think that, that Steve's correct in that, you know, somewhere it should be publicized, you know, where people know who are the donors. Because during the, during the ceremony, it's just that the students are getting it, so the public doesn't ever get to really see, um, who the donors are, so...
I'm thinking possibly of, um, we do this in, excuse me, in other communities where they list in the paper, uh, all of the donors, uh, you know, for, with scholarships, et cetera. In the past, we did have the donors would come and stand up, their organization, what they were doing, and that brought a lot of awareness to all the parents there to, you know, to...
Yes, yeah, no, we'll, we'll re, yeah, reinstall that again in a different, little different format. We want to separate the awards from the scholarships because it becomes a very cumbersome night, but we like to do both in, in their own way. But the, uh, the scholarships, yes, to put them either on the website or in the newspaper or something, or recognizing during a meeting, I think is appropriate for sure.
Thank you. Okay, the last thing was, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
And the last thing, um, was, what was the last thing? Oh, the, uh, the John Rezakarine resigning. I know we've gotten a lot of questions about her, but what's the, can you give us, what's the latest process?
I sure can. Um, so, uh, just got, um, information from Chelsea, our attorney, who's working with Carrie and I. Uh, and so, uh, we're going to go through this, and we'll, we'll go sit down with Andrew when he comes on board. Uh, but, um, we have two options, and they are to have a formal election or to have a provisional appointment, okay? And so, obviously, a provisional appointment would be no cost, okay? So, it's essentially, um, we have sixty-day window from the time of the resignation to, um, appoint somebody. So, it would be application process, uh, screening those applications, interview, uh, and then, um, and the interview is a live open meeting, okay? And then the board selects and appoints the new person. Okay, so probably by the, um, date, the, the end of, uh, August, we should, we should have that done. So, I will keep you posted on that process, because I have a few inquiries. Okay? Great. Thanks for asking. All right. Um, and so noted on our next board meeting, we're off in July, yee-hoo. Um, and August, Carrie, our meeting is August seventeenth, I believe. And, um, we may need to have a special meeting, virtual, to, um, approve, uh, how we're going to handle the vacancy, okay? So, that'll be a, a virtual meeting.
That'll be open.
Uh, yeah?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Um, with that, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
That's a motion.
Steve, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jose Juan. So, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Carrie, go call, please. Mr. Luke?
Aye.
Mr. Abara?
Aye.
Mrs. Clevenger?
Aye.
Mrs. Bell?
Aye.
Dr. Vicki?
Aye.
All right. Our motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone. The time is now seven oh two. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.